Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Isani City Council Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we can all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Taking roll call, all council members are now present. And let's move on to the committee meeting items. D1 Police Department Updates, Chief Myers.
Good evening, council, mayor. Just a few updates we have. One of the bigger updates is staffing. In the last month, we put on our part-time CSO came over from zoning over to PD, so that's CSO Lethaby. So he's been out trying to get that transition going as far as working with our records management system compared to the records management system that we had previously used. We have two new officers in full-time in training. One thing to point out to council, because of the council's approval of lateral transfer, at least posting and hiring, we're able to hire sixteen-year seasoned officer from another agency. So I know without that, we would have never even had that applicant nor we ever got that applicant. And to put a dollar amount on that many years of full-time service in law enforcement, it's you can't. So I want to thank you, council, for approving that. And the community should thank you as well because we're getting heck of an officer from another agency. So two in training, both of them should be down in mid-March, so leaves us one vacancy. But right now, we're kind of holding until we get those off of training so we can hire that last vacancies to get us to full staff. Lexipol, my council has approved to be implemented in 2020. We started that onboarding process. It's up to twelve-week onboarding process. So we have a committee of one officer, myself, and lieutenant are working with Lexipol for that onboarding. So we're looking at a twelve-week transition time until we get that, and we'll bring something back to council once we're actually ready to start pushing that out. Again, with fleet, we ordered a 2020 Drango for our fleet management plan, ETAs in April, and estimate in-service date in May by the time we get set up and ready to go. You do have the just the January comparisons, that's just the month of January. We put that out just to see where we're in January. As far as last year, we had total, I didn't have this data for you, but I'll tell you if you can keep a sharp mind, eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-one ICRs or calls for service, self-initiated, so just under nine thousand. In 2018, we had about eight hundred less, and in 2017, we had about five hundred less. So in 2019, we had the most ICRs we've had since we've been.
But that's not necessarily saying our crime rate is up, it's just saying that it's potential.
That's the police activity, police activity. So ICRs, we made anything from a call for service, traffic stop, to our self-initiated activity where we're documenting all our business checks when we check a business that was closed.
ICR stands for Initial Contact Report, correct?
Initial Crime Report, because that's the old terminology, but contact is more applicable.
Okay.
And we're utilizing that for a lot more stuff to actually document where officers are doing proactively as well as reactively. So we can actually put some geography on where they are and what they're doing throughout the year. Then with our, we report to the state for crime data, CJRS Criminal Justice Reporting System, that's a mandated reporting system. Numbers from that's pulled out into see another database for the FBI for the unified crime reports. And those numbers, those are the actual crimes that were reported for significant Part One, Part Two crimes. Last year in 2019 was two hundred and fourteen reported crimes. In 2018 was higher at two fifty-eight, and 2017 is two forty-four. So in the past three years, you know, it's only a statistical number we put out there, but it's the lowest one in the last three years, which is good to see. It is statistics and numbers, but it does kind of show a little bit of what has been going on. The last thing I have is on May 20, 20th, in front of the council, I gave the three goals that I was set out to do. One was the inventory of our assets and inventory, which has been completed, and now we're working with Mike as far as filling in those gaps to see what we're needed. The second goal was the mission statement, which was brought to council a few months ago. So we've indoctrinated that mission statement. And our officers, again, feel free to quiz them and question them, make sure they know it because they should be following it. And then staffing was the number three goal that I had, and we're on par to get to that completed staffing level by the summer to hire that last one, once the other two are off of training.
Two out of three is not bad.
Yes.
Well, you're two and a half out of three.
Two and a half, yes.
Good job, chief. Thanks for your due diligence, sir. Any questions, comments by the council?
Nope. Looks good. No.
All right. Let's move on to D2 Liquor Department Updates. John.
Okay, so I will go through the report, and we kind of got one thing that kind of came up that we'll talk about towards the end of the report, so I kind of put it there for that reason. All right, so gross profit for the months of November to January was twenty-seven point oh four. Our 2019 annual sales increase from prior year over year was five point five seven percent increase. Our largest one-day sales ever was twenty-nine thousand on December 31st. We shared that before. Finished the year with a total of just over three point one million in sales. So this is kind of an ongoing thing. I talked about this last year, the building with beer program by Miller Coors, we're still doing it. They ensure a taster once a month. A lot of new seltzers, a lot of new beers coming out in the coming year, so they'll be sponsoring it and continue with it on a monthly basis. The next topic was a veteran's designated parking spot was asked about the last committee of the whole meeting. In regards to this discussion, our opinion is that there really isn't a need for a designated parking spot for veterans. Our parking lot isn't big enough to make parking an issue, and on occasions where the parking lot is full, other customers aren't going to hesitate to park in an open spot, except of course for the handicap spot that we have. It's a great idea, but truly not practical for our location. We did survey, Keith and I talked to seven of our veterans that shop us regularly, and they, every one of them said why, you know, said we park in front anyway when we get here, and I never have an issue, so it's not an issue for me. So that's kind of where we were at with that. Also discussed at the committee of the whole meeting was a discount program for veterans and the idea of offering the discount every day. Tuesday currently is the only day designated for senior and veteran discount of ten percent on non-sale items. Giving a discount every day will impact our overall gross profit greatly. If we did it for veterans and not seniors, we'd surely hear complaints from the senior population. Many seniors and veterans do frequent our store every Tuesday to receive their discount. And one thing I did put in there as a compromise, which I think would be a great idea because we do get asked this, we'd like to extend the ten percent discount to veterans on Veterans' Day and Memorial Day.
I like that.
And just not offer it every day. I do have seniors, I did talk about this this morning, that do miss the day, they get the day screwed up. I just give it to them. So, or veterans, same thing. I got a couple veterans that come in that go, I couldn't make it here, and I just give it to them. So it's not like, I just don't want to make it a permanent thing because we would give up a lot if we did do that, so. Any questions on that?
Nope. Thanks for looking into it.
Yeah. All right, last thing.
I like the holiday idea, though, definitely.
Yeah, I think so, because we do get a, veterans come in and go, well, why wouldn't you offer it on Veterans' Day or Memorial Day? And true, we should.
That's a good point.
So I would be more than willing to do that, so.
No argument there.
And it always falls on a Monday, so, easy one, so. All right, last month at goal-setting, we discussed a consultant to do a current market analysis. We just found this out after goal-setting, that the last market analysis was performed in April 2006 by Dakota Worldwide. That's why this packet is huge. So if you get a chance to look through it, I'm going to hit some of the key points in it. And then I suggest doing an updated analysis, which would cost substantially less than the highest bid, which was up to thirty thousand, we discussed at goal-setting. In fact, the quote from Dakota for a current market analysis is seven thousand plus travel expenses, so substantially less. And it, if it is determined that our best option is to build a new store being next to an existing grocery store, has shown to consistently generate ten to twenty percent, and that's across the board. So I talked to every consultant, I've talked to stores that actually are next to grocery stores, and their wine overall sales ten to twenty percent, closer to twenty percent. I use Robinsdale as the example because they've only been open a year and a half, and he says it's been huge for them, so. So, and granted, if we're interested in doing that market study, we can. You can see the attached 2020 quote from Dakota Worldwide for details. A couple things I wanted to point out that was not on the 2006 because it was fourteen years ago. ECs was not here, and Cambridge had expanded. So Cambridge added on to their store, and their sales obviously increased from where they were, so. And then I also look at some of it and look at the whole overall sales per square foot, which in our industry, we laugh because I'm the unheard-of story. I do about seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per square foot, which is literally unheard of. The average is about four hundred and eighty-seven dollars per square foot, and if I had that variety that I could offer the customers, that would be huge. So increase overall sales is kind of the goal, so. Don't know what your feelings are on that. Jason and I talked today because he did a, I think he handed out what the expansion would look like at our current location, which doesn't really leave a loading ramp, and as it is right now, our trucks have to come in and back in and/or circle around the lot and back in and take up more than half of our spots. We have thirty-two spots right now, and that doesn't include employees parking there, so obviously, at times, we're at twenty-eight or less. And as we know, it's, we got to have a big enough parking lot, and shown on his picture here, putting them right next to the store would definitely interfere with unloading and things like that, too, so. And then Jason, like I said, Jason and I talked about it, and I'm kind of proposing at least eleven thousand square foot store because what we have is truly not sufficient. And I think he said the expansion would give us ninety-eight hundred square feet, which would not include back room, so we don't even know what our floor would be. And obviously, you need backroom storage for case beer when we buy it in by two, three hundred cases at a time.
You lack space.
Correct.
Every, in every department.
In every area, yes, yes.
Not to mention, a lot of your thing isn't compliant.
Right, we're not ADA compliant in three areas. Our front counter, where our employees stand behind, is a step up. Our actual counter is too high, it needs to be lowered. Our bathroom is not ADA compliant, a wheelchair will never fit in that bathroom. My office is not ADA compliant, it's two steps up, which is also, you know, an issue overall. So those things would have to be fixed. Obviously, a sprinkler system would have to be installed because we'd be on this, be beyond the square footage of that store that we have currently. So I don't know if Jason had anything to add. I know he and I talked about kind of some of the things, I think there's a pond on there. I think he had to for, for reasons that he knows, so I don't know if you have any questions for him on his, his picture, I guess.
Any questions or comments by the council?
I'd sure entertain a look at the thought of what it's going to cost to expand what we have versus what it's going to cost to build. I guarantee it's going to be half the price.
And I, and if we were going to do a market study, we'll, we'll know that, but I think what, what I'm worried about is, obviously, population is growing, and with the footprint we have, it's going to be pretty tight.
Yeah. I'm more than willing to spend seven grand versus thirty.
No, and I understand that, and that's where I hope everybody's on board with that because that's going to give us a better analysis of what we're truly looking for.
But there are four other gentlemen up here that we'd have to. But I, I, I'll admit right now in front of everyone here, I'd rather spend the seven than thirty. And we're going to get the same results.
Well, if we're going to get the same results, then we get, let's go ahead and do it, because we might as well get the answers we're looking for.
It's pretty in-depth if you look at it. There's a lot in there that I was kind of eye-opening to me, even at two point eight million, and that was doubling our store if you look in that original report from 2006. Well, we didn't do that, and we've already hit three million, so.
She's pretty extensive. I mean, I'm looking at the table of contents, and she's got a three-year growth pattern, a trade area, population demographics, I mean, she covers everything she does.
Yeah, we didn't have a grocery store.
Yeah.
At the time, really. Like we do now.
She's still willing to keep that same fee, even though that.
Exactly.
Cambridge has done something, and we have a grocery store now, and.
Yep, because I went over that with her, because I actually went, read through the report with her, and she goes, all of that would be included. And like I said, ECs wasn't even in existence at the time, so.
Definitely something I would think we should discuss, and.
What size lot would it take for eleven thousand square foot building with parking spaces and loading dock such? Roughly, how big of a lot are we talking?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know off the top of my head, the proportions of the, you know, number of stalls per square foot of building, you know, would all kind of come into play, so, you know. This site plan that I laid out is maxed out on the parcel that we have, at the, at our actual, like, city required number of stalls to building size, so proportionately, you know, if this only made it to ninety-eight hundred, when you say eleven thousand, you mean total square footage?
Total square footage, which would be, obviously, square footage of the floor would not be that big because we do need a backroom.
Well, Jason, you put on here the forty-six hundred square feet plus another ninety-eight hundred, where you.
No, that's grand total, that's not an addition.
So it was ninety-eight hundred grand total?
Is it how much we could fit on this lot?
Oh, with the parking spaces?
Oh, yeah, I was confused, like, geez, he's over eleven thousand right now, so what are, what are we complaining about?
Yeah, no, we made it to ninety-eight hundred total.
Okay.
And the stall total went to fifty-nine from, from twenty-five, so.
So you're essentially looking to add another five thousand two hundred square feet to what you currently have.
True, building.
Right.
Building, yes.
Which would fall back to, why don't we add that and then remodel what you have, and you blend it in together, and it looks like one whole building? It sounds like we've had this conversation.
We have, but I think the whole thing is getting in and out for trucks, that's my whole thing, so. And I don't know what the cost is, that's where I think the whole study's going to actually lay it out for us, what it's going to cost. I have no idea.
With what it costs to remodel, I think the study.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm trying to count here, Councilman Lundin and myself are talking about was, he thought I was trying to count how many spots total, and I'm not, I'm just worried if a truck came in there, how many spots is he clogging up until he's unloaded?
He literally has to go diagonal, that's what he does now. So it goes right across the fourteen spaces right there in the middle, and he's at an angle to back in.
Well, I think, I think also, you could, as far as I'm concerned, you can get rid of that green space at the end of that thing that gives them a little more room in there, too. I, I get the green space, but let's be realistic, you know, it's just something else for maintenance, for public works to have to go out and clean.
Well, true.
And maintain. And if gives him more room, I don't see any reason that he can't come in, turn back in there, we get rid of that green space spot there. I mean, let's leave what we can for green space, I understand that, but.
The trouble is when.
I drive truck for a living full-time besides being the mayor here, and I could do one-eighties in that lot.
They have to wait for customers to leave before they can finish pulling in.
I could do one-eighties in that lot, guaranteed.
With a fifty-three footer?
If that green space wasn't there.
Well, and it's true, though. If the green space isn't there, there's cars parked there, that's what I'm.
It wouldn't be a parking spot.
I think you have to have the green space, Sheila's got it all written all over her face, we have to follow the same rules as we just made the Dollar General follow, so.
So we'd have to have a certain amount of green space, is what you were going to say?
Yep, twenty-five percent.
And then I could actually look at Councilman Gordon, too, you could drive a fifty-three footer in there.
I think I could, yeah.
I know I could, too. With or without that green space, I bet we could.
Are the, I mean, your dock doors would be facing north, straight north, or?
That's where they're at now.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are you looking at that you want different, John?
That's, that's not enough room, that's not enough parking spaces, I don't think.
That's fifty-eight of them there, right? Oh, you have fifty-eight.
No, right now, I have thirty-two. Right now, I have thirty-two.
You would be expanded to fifty-eight.
Right.
Employee parking.
Something I think we, we definitely need to discuss, gentlemen. I personally, you guys have your own opinions, but I think we should go ahead with a seven-thousand-dollar study.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
So, I mean, there's myself and two others already saying it, so.
I think that's going to give us the answers we're looking for.
I would agree.
I agree.
So I, I think sending him forward with a seven-thousand-dollar study is, unless you have something you'd like to add, Councilman Gordon or Councilman Cullison?
No, that's, that's going to cover pretty much all three options, about four.
It is, it's going to give us the options and where we want to go from there.
And mayor and council, I may, in speaking for Mr. Becker, we do have funds available within the liquor fund to cover that seven thousand dollars, so we would still send it through approval through council, but there are funds there for, for this.
I don't think we need to bring this back, we can just put it on an agenda.
Because it's an unbudgeted item over five thousand, our purchasing policy does require us to come back, and the auditors, if they ever pull that item, will need to have that papered out.
It has to come back to council for us to vote on.
Yeah, that's what I mean, bring it back to the agenda for council, we don't have to go through Cal with this.
No, I'm sorry. It does, right. Go to council.
We're trying to make it a little speedier.
Yep.
I think, I think John's been drug through the dirt enough, let's get him moving here.
Yep, this will, this will get us in the right direction.
I think since we've been on Liquor Store Committee, we've been trying to get this moving. We've been talking about expansion for a long time. Expansion or a new store or remodel or something.
Amazing what a team player does for you, gentlemen, huh?
Well, I'll tell you what, if you knew what the liquor store was like before that, before that building, and the Belmonter business that went from there to there, you'd be surprised.
Was it in downtown here? Oh, yuck.
Yeah, I mean, I, the council chambers is twice as big as the floor space was in there alone.
Oh, wow, John would probably still make money out of it, though.
Sort of do well.
All right, John, thanks for all your hard work, sir. We'll, we'll get the study going here and move forward, see what we can come up with for you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions on the report from anyone?
Well, thanks, John. Great job, as always.
I don't know, I'm tired of saying that to you, because it's always a good job, so. That's like Jason Cook. Jason Cook, I'm never, I'm never saying anything good anymore about him either. Every time, I'm like, oh, this one's fantastic, oh, the last one wasn't?
We can always ask where I come back.
Ooh. All right, moving on. D3, the draft ordinance annexed parcels, Ms. Sellman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In December, at the committee of the whole meeting, we talked about some of the parking issues and some of the code enforcement issues with the annexed parcels. So we kind of got some direction from the council to come back with a proposed ordinance. Basically, what's going to be affected here is we change the gross vehicle weight from fifteen thousand to fifty thousand specifically for annexed parcels, and if you're over one acre. Parking on previous surface, we changed that language for the annexed parcels. The drive, the driveway, we had the grandfather clause in there. That was where if you were to add on to your building or build a shed or whatever, you would have to bring your driveway into compliance. We changed that per council direction to have the annexed parcels exempt unless they were to subdivide. If they're to subdivide and a new house comes in, then it needs to meet the requirements. We also changed the number of vehicles that can be allowed. We have it that, the ordinance talks about units, it's a number of vehicles and units, which could be a fish house, a trailer, those types of things. So you're allowed to have four vehicles, and you're allowed to have two units, so that would be, you know, a total of five. We changed it to say unless the property is more than one acre, then a maximum of seven units are permitted, so however you want to split that up. Or, and then we said that, I'm sorry, not however you want to split that up, it's a total number of seven units, and so if it's the trailers, that type of thing, it can be three, and then cars, vehicles would be six. But you have to balance it out to only have seven total. And then the enforcement of the, you know, junk, rubbish, miscellaneous garbage, improper vehicles would be enforced immediately, which we are already enforcing, so.
I think that was pretty much what we all discussed, and I.
Good compromise.
What's that?
Good compromise.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we're going to beat this thing to death for a hundred years.
Absolutely.
And I, I, I think, you know, I feel sorry for the people who are annexed. I've said that all along, and I think we're making a good compromise, and I, and there was some that were here that were annexed in, and.
There's one here now.
Yep, and they brought that up, and they were fine with that, so I, as far as I'm concerned, I think this is a done issue, other than us voting on it in council. As far as I'm concerned, I just move forward with it.
My main concern is, is as an annex resident, do you feel this is meeting halfway? You annexed people in the audience?
I don't follow the neighbors' categories myself.
No worries in your world, then, right?
No, I have concerns about some neighbors that have more things to deal with after getting rid of what they have.
Mr. Mayor, they don't need to get rid of it, it's just having it outside.
Most, I don't know what it, I know I'm on like point three acres in town, and I can build a two-and-a-half car garage in my backyard. So if you got more than an acre, you can build a pretty nice storage facility.
Pole barns, everybody, pole barns.
No.
Cat bill, pole barns.
But like being a lineman, so you raise the limit up to fifty thousand pounds, but I'm driving happy to here, I may not be into big cats or bringing that home, which has never been a problem, I can drive cream in there if I want, or a semi. So we weren't the next by choice, so I don't think it's, I think it's a compromise, yes, but I was certainly with some of the limits. If you do a taste swing, you're not an ice lord, you shouldn't be involved. Does the whole team, that your trust yard, they would be taking care of our properties and you do your stuff?
And I actually wouldn't argue that on either one of your properties, because I go by them, I mean, I go by everybody's property. I guess it's kind of part of my role, but, and I wouldn't disagree with that. I think your properties are very well-kept, but there are some that aren't.
Do you agree?
And those are the ones that, I guess the best way I could put it, are going to ruin it for the rest of you.
I'm just answering your point, but I'm also paying forty-five hundred dollars a year to tax the balance on over fifty dollars where I get any purchase, so I'm not buying them for a store.
And, and I understand your point as well. If your neighbors don't complain, I mean, I, we can't beat this and keep beating it and keep beating it, because we're just going to keep running circles. So we got to put something in writing.
Fortunately enough, I didn't say this, but fortunately enough, our CSO officer is on complaint basis only, he's not driving around looking.
He said it for me.
That's all I'm going to say. That's all I'm going to say.
Instead of telling them to slow down, just anonymously call our police chief. He'll take care of it.
I mean, I, I know there was residents in this town that I'd like to throw spice tricks out for them when they drive flying through town the way they do. I, I don't need to mention any names, I know there's some people already know who I'm referring, one person I'm referring to. And matter of fact, I just told Chief Myers tonight, Railroad Avenue just held the South Passage, this guy went flying by there, I didn't even see him come around the corner. He wasn't there when I went to go pull out, and I had to slam on my brakes, and I sped up to thirty miles an hour, and he was still pulling away before he even got to the stop sign. You know he's flying.
I'm saying the same, I know you guys are trying to capitalize, but you may get some to us tomorrow if we're planning on going to work anymore, your residents are going to change.
No, I'm saying it's, as Councilman Lundin was saying, it's complaint basis, and I see what you're saying, you just, one upset neighbor is going to.
Upset the applicant.
That's how it usually starts.
Yeah.
And it's just.
And it's a trip down the street.
Everybody down the street's getting pictures of them, you know.
What is that penalty, Ms. Sellman, if they violate it for a night or two nights?
Well, I can actually. Well, I can actually refer that to the chief, because that's his department, but typically you would get a notification.
And the chief would use his discretion, mind you, but chief, what is that penalty? Do you recall?
Well, the first step would be a notification that it's in violation of the ordinance.
Okay.
It'd be a notice, be, be a notice that it's in violation.
By the time you probably get it, by the time you get the notification, you probably had moved on with it already. Trust me, I was not for that annexation. I, unfortunately, I was gone on vacation, and I asked that, Mr. Burgley even asked for me to have that table till I returned, and it wasn't done, because it needed to be done immediately, because he knew there would be opposition in it.
I was in the audience at that time, and I, I did hear Mr. Burgley ask on his behalf.
We're not up here to point out who was here, who wasn't, who voted yea or nay.
But I just...
It is what it is. Let's move on. We've discussed this a lot. It's, so...
We do, and that's why we're trying to compromise.
And what about those people that take good care of their yards and are living next door to, let's say, a junkyard, um, what's this, Tyler Street? So, we shouldn't... Out of all the, all, out of all the parcels that were annexed, there are quite a few that have a lot of garbage everywhere around the house, okay? I'm not, I don't know them personally, but it wouldn't be fair to the people that, like, say you live next door to one of them, annexed properties. You were also annexed, I understand that, but... You could park your rig in your driveway, but you'd still have to look at all their junk. What are we supposed to do about that? We won't be able to do anything about it. Who bought that house? I'm saying if you got two neighbors living next door to each other, this guy here got annexed and this guy got annexed. This guy keeps his driveway and his yard meticulous, nice and clean.
His looks like yours. Any one of your, your yards, because I know what your yards are like.
This guy doesn't. So, you'd be okay with maybe 10, 15 years down the road selling your house, trying to sell it next to that junkyard? Don't, don't you think you'd get more if all the yards are...
But they're not obiding by the rules, if they have junk everywhere. That's my whole point. Sure. Yes, ma'am.
That's what we're discussing right now.
So, for us to... This isn't a new law, but we're trying to, the city, the city had an ordinance. So, now, because you're part of that city and you were forced to be part of that city, we're trying to meet at a halfway point here to say, hey, we already, we know we shell shocked you already.
So, you guys won't be held to the standard that everybody else is with smaller lots.
Yes. Well, it ha, you're part of the city now. Go ahead, Ms. Sellman.
Right now, because you are part of our city, you would fall under all those same rules, and it would be enforceable right now. What we're trying to do is give leeway to the annexed parcels to allow you to have more vehicles, to allow you to have, um, larger gross weight, because those are some of the issues that have been expressed to us. Right now, current ordinance today, you couldn't do that. That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
Yep, that's what we're doing.
Trucks up on blocks that haven't moved in 15 years, um, dilapidated sheds with garbage falling out of the sides of them. It's, it, it, a nuisance, structural, I don't know.
An operable vehicle would fall under...
It's not a current licensed vehicle. It could fall under...
It's considered an inoperable vehicle, which is a nuisance, which is not permitted per code for anybody.
I guess when you, when you're asking about rubbish, that's just something we've been, we're using as an example. It's, unfortunately, we can go another route, and that's enforce a hundred percent city code, which hasn't given you those leeways. Then you have another issue if, by what we're doing, if an existing citizen comes in and says, well, why are they allowed to do that? And I can't, and their, their house was part of the city from day one, now we're stuck in between another rock and a hard place. That's why we've been giving a compromise on this the whole time. And it's, do I think it's, it's terrible? Absolutely. But at this point, there's nothing else that I can do or anybody up here can do to change that, unless we all agree upon it type of thing, but...
It's unfortunate that me, that I live right on Main Street in the city, that you guys were forced annexed in, and now, the way it was supposed to be was you have to follow the same rules that I do. And you got one plus acres. So, every city ordinance that I have to follow, you now have to follow, because you were forced annexed. And we understand that forced annexation, had I been in the seat, would've never happened. Nothing would've been forced.
Well, you also gotta remember, there's two other government entities that had to agree upon this before it ever happened.
Correct.
The township and the state.
Correct.
So...
Which the township and the state agreed upon it. Um, so, I mean, it went forward, and, and right now, we're looking at it, it is what it is, but now we're trying to sit back and say, what's reasonable? They've already been forced, so what's reasonable for us to not come at them 100%? And we're stepping back, trying to figure out, as Ms. Sellman was saying, I can only have four vehicles in my driveway. No more. We're saying you can have, uh, what did we say? We, I gotta look. Six. That's not counting possibly a boat or a trailer. Um, mine would be three vehicles and a boat. There's my four. Or mine could be two vehicles, a motorhome and a boat. There's my four. I can't have no more than four. It's not even an acre. It's a...
Probably a third.
It's a third. And that's why we compromised, or in this ordinance, it's saying if you have one or more acres, we're giving you leeway.
And these, these are vehicles that are parked outside, don't forget. These are vehicles that are parked outside. He has a two-car garage. Technically, he could have six if two were in the garage. You understand that? So, if you have a four-car garage...
You could have four vehicles.
You could have 10 vehicles.
10 vehicles.
You got four in and five out.
You got the bigger lot. You got room for bigger garages than we, you know, we in town here, so, I, I don't know. I think it's...
Which we are, and that's why we told you our CSO will, he'll, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, chief? He'll use his discretion. I personally don't think you'll have a problem.
Mayor, if I may, um, the document that I just handed you, Mrs. Welkum, um, has anything that's on, that's a current ordinance with anything underlying is the suggested or draft changes. So, you can take that with you, and we can make copies if you would like, give that, you time to review that, and if you have any further thoughts, please bring them back to the next Cal, or, I mean, I'm sorry, the next council meeting where it'll be discussed again.
And I'll, and I'll mind the three of you. This is just a discussion right now. Nothing's being passed. Absolutely.
Well, I appreciate what you guys are all doing, and I, I can't say it enough, what happened to you was terrible. It's done, is done. We can't change that. All we can do is move forward.
And, and we're wanting and willing to work with you. We, we gotta meet halfway, and hopefully you understand our side as well as we understand yours. I'd, I'd like to say you're exempt, but what's that gonna do to the next guy that lives in town? Why, why can't I be exempt? It's gonna happen. I'm gonna get it from every direction, so are these gentlemen.
You know, I, just for example, Kenny Carlson, where he, when he used to live, Dran, you know where he lived, he has a pole barn in there. Pole barns aren't allowed in town anymore. Uh, the hardware store, my father owned that building back in 1980. Put that building, that pole barn in there in the back for our rental business prior to that, and the codes have changed. But now the next guy down the street says, why can't I have one you allowed them? It, it's, it's a catch 22, double-edged sword, any way you wanna say it. So, it's, it makes it really tough to, you know, I wish I could have a pole barn in my backyard.
Me too.
You know, I just can't. You know, economically, it's more feasible to build a pole barn than a stick frame building.
I'd never be in the house. I'd always be in the pole barn.
It's, I'm stuck with it. It's the way it is. But I also did choose, which you did not have a choice, to move into the city, and I totally understand that. Totally do I understand that.
So, I, I guess for us to, I mean, it's our pleasure to hear your comments and questions and concerns, because it does, it'll rattle around in our brains for the next two weeks, I guarantee you. And again, this is a discussion. So, we could come back as a discussion again, uh, before anything's passed. Uh, I was very adamant about being transparent with you folks. We're talking about it. Send them a letter. I want them to be here. And, and I'll continue to do it. If we're gonna talk about it, I'll send you a letter, because I want you to be here. I wanna hear your concerns. I want you to meet me halfway, because I'll meet you halfway, or this council will meet you halfway. We're, we're looking to work with you. We just need... We need to, we need to find that halfway point.
And we need to get this finalized.
And we need, yeah, we need to get it done and over with.
When you guys are saying tier one, you know, some of these things that Dan is worried about, I mean, is the tier one, if you were to just enforce that, would that take care of some of those issues? Or is it not as restrictive where we can't, you know, clean up a bunch of rubbish around, and I mean, is it, I mean, what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, so they're not tier one anymore because they're in our city.
Right, but if they were, if they were still tier one...
It would still, um, I'd have to look as far as the number and, and vehicle, but I know the rubbish was still applicable to everybody, but, um, I would have to look.
Okay, so, I mean, some of the things that we're trying to enforce really probably were already supposed to be enforced.
Their township had a choice to enforce that.
The township didn't enforce it, obviously.
Which the township didn't, no.
Right, but if, if it was enforced, it would've cleaned up some of those issues. I like the idea of, you know, if, if it's, they're exempt until an ownership change, I think that's a great idea. But I don't know how you, you know, can that be enforced is the hard thing, you know, and you gotta keep track of which houses have sold and which ones haven't, and, you know, that would be, I don't know. I, I like the idea of if it could be enforceable, I guess.
See, that's, that's another problem. Unfortunately, real estate agents don't come into the city by saying, say, I'm listing property A, and it's for sale. We don't know the chain, owner change ship over, and if the new people that buy it stay up on their taxes, we have no clue unless we spend a lot of resources searching that.
Uh, that's not necessarily true, because the minute they transfer the water bill, then we'd know.
If they have water.
If they have water. For your storm fees. You're right. Is that storm, Ms. Wood? Is that storm fees or what, what fee is?
I think, well, are you referring to just water?
Water waste fee or?
Oh, so, okay, sorry, I know what you're talking about. So, in the water and sewer code, if you have reasonable access or you have access to water sewer services, you do pay a half of the base fee charge.
Okay, we had that discussion. What is that labeled as, though?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure of how it is.
So, that, that's my point, is once they sold that house, we'd know.
So, the stormwater charge is not a half of anything. That's just for the water and sewer. Stormwater is charged based on, um, I believe the size of the property, and Mr. Cook, you'd be able to probably correct on this. But that is, takes into account all the things, whether it's infrastructure with the stormwater. It doesn't per se deal with, like, holding stormwater, per se, I guess. Do you wanna explain the stormwater charge, please?
Yeah, that's that, uh, stormwater utility fee that got established to, to cover the entire city's system, and it's a, it's just an overall distribution of the cost to maintain the overall system. It's not based on an individual's site grading, um, and that cost in itself, in your case, specifically, the time that we're putting into looking into that flooding issue, that cost is covered by that fee. That's where the money's coming from, uh, just like our maintenance of the storm system and, and making sure the streets aren't flooding and, and those types of things.
I actually have something that I'll bring up at a different meeting, and I'll meet with, with, uh, Ms. Wood. There's, uh, there's something in the back of my mind here that, uh, was done in the past, and I'll, I'll speak to her about it, and we'll come back, and we'll cover your property as well. I have yet to steer you in the wrong direction, and I won't, so just believe what I say. I'll, I'll take a look at it. Ms. Wood and I'll meet about it.
I do wanna say, um, but what they are saying is correct. That is usually how the, the only way that the city does know, um, of a property change is through the utility billing process. That is true.
That, that's what I said, actually, but, yeah. Well, once they sell their house, we would know, because then somebody else would have to take over the utility bill. I mean, aha, they sold. So, then we would know, so...
So, if we did get a complaint, it would be fairly easy to check and see if it had been sold and if it was enforceable.
Check the water bill, by the utility bill.
If we enforced the part, the tier one, then we would still take care of some of the things that we're trying to take care of, and I think that, that would be the way I would like to go.
Well, we'll do a little homework. Councilman Gordon. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I'll do a little homework. Let's move on in the meeting here. Uh, D4, review the 2020 goal-setting, uh, action items. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this is a review of what we discussed at the 2020 goal-setting meeting, uh, just to make sure that council and staff were all on the same page. I have bulleted out, um, the actions or the, um, the path that and the direction for staff to take on all these, so let me know if you see any, um, any errors. What I also have included with this, um, is I do wanna emphasize this is a draft. Um, this will be your page three of this item or the attachment, um, a draft, and also potential or possible funding ideas. So, one of the things, um, was to look at, you know, what can we do with the items we wanna see done that were discussed at goal-setting, but not per se increase the levy? What can we do by shifting things around? Some things were discussed that day about, um, maybe we don't put new equipment into the parks that are having, um, aged infrastructure like VFW, I- Sandy Neighborhood Hills, and things like that. And then also looking at what we have allocated within the upcoming years for capital improvement plan, and what can we move back to give us some funds in the near future? So, what you see on the first one would be the Performance Center. So, that's the amphitheater in Bluebird... So what you see on the first one would be the Performance Center, so that's the amphitheater in Bluebird Park. Again, possible or potential funding ideas are, we could push some of the CIP items, like a leaf and grass back, land pride disc, tree spade, grapple bucket, and move those down the road later in our replacement schedule. Um, when Mike put these together, he's talked with all of the staff to make sure that these were feasible, but a lot of it is, you don't really know, but we think it should work. Um, also, as I just mentioned, not replacing some of that park equipment, uh, eliminating those from the capital improvement schedule as a whole. So you'll see that in that notes section. And then at the bottom of that number one, you'll see that, well, potentially, if we do all those things, here's how much money we would have, which would be enough to build that amphitheater. And then in that second column, you see at the earliest target date, that would be the earliest year we could complete that task, so potentially twenty twenty-one. Uh, item number two for restrooms, that would be using special assessment revenue, and this is assuming that revenue has been collected from, whether it be deferred assessments that we have out there. I don't know the exact number currently of all those, but we do have funds that come in, um, because of those, like, we have the Hibbee property, who's still, was, I believe, like, two hundred and eighty thousand or something, don't quote me on that. Um, but that.
I'm lost. I'm just trying to ask these gentlemen, where, where, where is she reading off of?
Oh, this is.
Oh, I got it now. I see it now, Ms. Wood. I'm sorry.
Um, the next one would be a splash pad, uh, the earliest completion date potentially could be twenty twenty-three, but that would be looking at some special assessment revenue, but may, but also looking at, um, having a levy increase, small one, multiple years. Lighting infill, again, that would be, we'd put in, we'd discuss approximately ten thousand dollars every year that comes out of the general fund, and we would put together a plan for an infill, looking at what neighborhoods or what areas corridors need to be lighted first. Um, the public works storage salt, uh, building, looking at all the, um, enterprise funds, they can fund themselves for that project. Liquor store study, we actually already discussed that, and there was, um, funds within that liquor store fund of six oh nine. For the fire department, um, he put together some brief notes, but really not too much, it's, you know, that might be a bigger discussion for another day, as if we do want to end up leasing that to them or selling to them, something. Now, depending on what we do with that building, would impact what we do with the public safety building. He did put a question mark that we could do lease dependent, so we would use funds that we collected from over there to use to build.
He's only given us one option, though, which I don't like that. I mean, what, we'll facetiously say that if we decided we were gonna sell that building to the fire department, and then we expand it onto our liquor store, where the heck do our police go now?
Well, you could, and that's something he stated that day, that you could use, um, what, you use that funds from that lease to, you're gonna end up bonding, but would pay part of that money back, would be the lease revenue to building a new building. That's building a new one. There's a lot of, oh, I'm sorry.
He, he only gave us one option, that's all.
Well, there's a lot of variables on, on that, um, a lot of moving pieces. I think he's just starting to put ideas together.
Could you comment on the ones without dates? What did you say about that? Why do these not have dates? Like the, like the storage salt, public works building, and, um, fire department, we have to negotiate that out.
Well, that, everything has a date, except for what we do with the, you know, well, fire department, he put a date on there, but also the public safety building.
There's dates on them.
It all depends, but everything else has dates.
This doesn't have a date?
Yeah, they're the years.
Oh, I was looking over at this year.
He's looking in the wrong spot.
Oh, the other column that has the word year, that is for moving those funds around, cause not everything you do in one year, so we take gradual steps to get there. That's what that other column is.
Oh, I see, I was looking, yeah.
What he's doing is an earliest, uh, target completion. So he's seeing at the earliest twenty twenty-one, he can do that Performance Center, the restrooms. I didn't know we were gonna do them at the same time.
Who's he, Mr. Becker?
Mike Becker. He's trying to shift things around and finance it without looking for money.
She doesn't, there's another issue. If we were to do this expansion on the liquor store, where would we end up doing our farmer's market? You know, and that's, and that's, you know, you get to the point, we did that expansion, we could always move that out to Bluebird by the amphitheater. I mean, getting that, getting the use out of that park is just gonna be huge.
I don't know, I go to the farmer's market all the time.
I do, too. I've stopped in quite regularly, but, but I'm just saying, if we did this expansion on the liquor store, we would not have that spot where they're at.
If we moved it to the.
Coburn's parking lot.
Well, we can move it to Bluebird Park. Yeah, we can move it to Bluebird Park. We'll leave that to the parking rack.
Uh, there, we, we would have to look at different things. I mean, originally where it was, was at Eagle Park, that has nothing there. You could go back to where that location is. I know that there's been a lot of great feedback having at the liquor store versus that location, but it still was a successful.
I think if you give them more room, the happier they are.
I just, I just, I, this was just pointing something out, is all I was doing.
Yeah.
I mean. I mean, we can go over these numbers and over these numbers and over these numbers, sometimes, and dates. I, I, you know, I think you pretty much got the gist of that follow-ups. Now, I wanna cut you short, but we're.
Nothing, excuse me, but this is nothing to really take action on, or, you know, really for much of anything, but just to give some thoughts, to mull over.
Keeping us in the loop.
Yeah, keeping it, just, and here's an idea of something, and staff will work along the way, but it's to kinda thrash it over for the next few months until we get to budgeting. Because budgeting time come May, uh, June is when we'll need to start, um, moving things around and not doing certain things if this is our end goal. So we'll discuss throughout the way. I just wanna throw this out there, that you guys have time to review it.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Move on to D six, the whiskey sidewalk infill update discussion.
We have, actually have number five.
Could we move, did I miss five? Oh, sorry, D five, twenty twenty goal-setting events follow-up. Ms. Garvey?
Mayor and Council. All right, so I went ahead and researched a little bit more on three specific items that we had discussed at the goal-setting meeting back in, on January twenty-seventh. And so they're kind of highlighted here, um, broken down into each of those three categories. The first one is the fireworks, um, that you had, had asked me to review a little bit more in detail. And I kinda broke it down into kind of a pro, pro column and a con column, um, so it's a little bit easier to kinda decipher. And so that, for fireworks, it could be a twenty-minute show, it can be really any length of show, but kinda based it on a twenty-minute show. Um, we would be able to utilize Bluebird Park and or the rodeo grounds, um, for another event, more of a community event, and that, that people would stay in I- Sandy a little bit longer, bring back an old tradition for fireworks. And then the cost, um, ten thousand, being able to do traffic control, which would entail some police, uh, set up and tear down of the launch, launch site, um, and that perimeter. Mosquito control, and then the people and traffic would leave, leave town sooner, and then again, kind of weather-dependent, another, whenever you're doing anything outside, it's always gonna be weather-dependent.
The only one I see that's bad is weather-dependent. I think the other thing we could live with.
I think mosquito control, we've already discussed that.
Yeah.
It's just gonna have, have to go out and spray one other time, you know. Um, either weather-dependent, that's gonna happen no matter what you do.
Right.
Weather-dependent can be a pro, too, if it's a nice day.
Right. That's what I mean. I mean, the only thing that I really see that's bad in that column is weather-dependent. The cost, we knew we were gonna have to spend a little to bring back an old tradition. Traffic control, I believe in my police department, they'll, they'll handle that.
So the fireworks, we're talking about doing it right after the parade, is that what this is?
Yeah, and then the tear down, uh, Chief Shankovich was here last time and said he would gladly help with that. And he'd stand by as fire, so I don't see a problem with that. Mosquito control, as Councilman Lundin said, people, traffic, leave town sooner? I don't know.
I don't see, I don't see the cons being that bad a deal.
I don't see the cons being that bad either, that's my point.
I think we're gonna bring that much in cost, I think that'll bring us in-business revenue.
I think all the businesses in the city would be happy.
So if I may, uh, Mayor and Council, on these first two items, the fireworks and the float, it would also to be giving, um, Ms. Garvey direction as to, do we want to amend the budget this year, to do in twenty twenty? The egg hunt likely is not going to be feasible this year with time constraints, which we would speak on that. But the other two, is this to consider for this year, or to put in the budget for twenty twenty-one? We could, we would need clarity on that, too.
We said that last year, though. That's why we pushed it to this year.
The only thing I didn't see on here was that medallion discussion on the rodeo.
That one's already happening.
That one's already happening.
We have clear direction at goal-setting.
Oh, did we? Okay.
To do that.
Oh, I, my, my bad, I didn't realize.
He was sleeping, then.
These were just ones that we weren't quite sure. The other ones, we act, we actually have funding for. There's nothing unbudgeted about those. That one took place of a different item.
Oh, you sleep.
It's a wash.
Okay.
But these bigger ones, well, actually, maybe the float would fit in with it, what we have budgeted, but especially the fireworks. Um, if we want to use additional park funds unbudgeted, staff would just seem to the direction to bring that back to council for this year.
I don't know, can, Ms. Garvey, can you get these done in time for this year? That's the question.
Uh, the fireworks and the float, um, that, there's plenty of time to do, but the egg hunt, there is not.
No, I totally agree.
Mainly because they're, advertising would be the biggest thing, is that there's not enough time for advertising, um, for an egg hunt. But in subsequent years, I mean, then I'd have enough time to.
The egg hunt, we could, if we roll into our budget setting for next year, that would be the same, twenty twenty-one.
That'd be golden.
If, if we can make those, these two first items work, we'd have to discuss it with Mr. Becker, where the numbers come from. Um, I don't see any reason we can't. If you feel that we can get these done in that time, I think we should go for it, as long as we can get the budgeting for it, I think it's fine, awesome.
I, I would concur with the egg hunt going into twenty twenty-one.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions, Col, Mr. Collison?
Uh, floats take quite a bit of time to build.
Do they?
They do.
Not when you make it a team project.
Cause, uh, it's, uh, obviously, it's gotta be pulled all over the state.
I think going all, the float's a city float.
Just for the city parade.
Or you're not gonna put the ambassadors on it to go on other parades?
The ambassadors have their own. Their ambassadors have their own.
That's, I assume they would've, but that's why I was.
No, this was, this was letting the city of I- Sandy partake in its own parade.
That's what I understood it as.
I think Councilman Collison brings up a really valid point. We should discuss who does get to go on the float to make sure, is it just city staff and city council? Um, are there others that they ask, if they are related to the city? I mean, I think that is great, we should discuss to make sure staff knows.
I made, I made the joking comment of, how cool would it be to, to build a mini council chamber on this float? And have us sit at it with our staff sitting out like they are now, and we go on the parade.
Don't we have to limit that, though, to just two councilmen, because?
We actually could do it, we just would have to put a notice in the paper, that there would be an, um, a work session where all of you would be present.
The city's partaking, it's a team-building experience for our staff. I think they'd have a blast with it. You just gotta put, uh, Mike Becker and Katie Brooks in charge of it, and it'll be great.
I guess, I guess what I would say for right now, if we can.
Katie just wants to wave, I can see it in her smile. I'm just there to wave, right, Katie?
I'd say for right now, if we can make this work, I guess we can work out the other details later, at a later di, time. I mean, first of all, this is just discussion items, and the next step is, can we fund it? And if we can fund it, we can vote on it at that point, and then we can hash out that other details.
I think they'll ask Ms. Garvey, if we have the funding, we'll obviously put that back to council, and then she can put together, um, a resolution that has all those specific things outlined, so we can discuss them, change them, agree to them.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
I think both of them sound like a lot of fun, I just don't like the costs, so, but you guys knew I was gonna say that already.
Yeah, we already knew that.
Sorry.
All right, let's move on.
Money for something else, is all it is.
Let's move on to D seven, the, uh, wait, and I'm, I'm confused, we're at D six. The whiskey sidewalk infill update discussion. This was one that you fine fellows gave me the opportunity to go talk to this gentleman. Um, this is the north and the south side of Cedar on Whiskey. Um, I came up with the numbers, uh, with Mr. Cook and Mr. Becker, and I had everything written down. I was ready to go. I called the gentleman to talk to him, and before I could even open my mouth, he said, I'm not interested. So he went right back to, I want no part. So here we stand again. He didn't even hear me out, and then he did make it a point to say, I've already spoke to my attorney, and you can't do nothing about it. Which we all know ain't true, but.
Well.
I don't wanna be that guy.
I don't wanna be that guy, and I don't wanna irritate this guy. I think we should just table this until maybe in future.
Here we go, you're, you're postponing.
We postpone it.
You're postponing it.
Postpone this for another year.
Can I give, change verbiage?
Yeah, postpone this for another year, or whatever, just keep it in the works, and we just have to approach them and discuss it over and over with them. I, I don't wanna be that person, like, we know what we could do, and I don't wanna do that.
I don't either.
It's just gonna irritate more people.
So what is his objection? Is, is he worried about trash being thrown?
Yes, and then it's, uh, who's gonna weed whip it? Even though I said, uh, the city would mow that.
Okay, so you talked to him a little bit?
Oh, I talked to him a lot.
Okay, and then you just said.
And he was for it, and he said, you come up with numbers, and then we'll talk, so I came up with the numbers, I sat down with Mr. Cook, I sat down with Mr. Becker, we came up with the numbers. I was ready to go at him, I called him, um, before I could even say hi to him, it was, I'm not interested.
He, he don't have kids that have to walk to school.
He don't, and he admits it. He wants us to spend our more, our money more properly in crosswalks.
So they can go like this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Across the whiskey road?
Well, until somebody gets killed on there, then they'll realize it, so, uh, there's nothing at this point we can do with it any further.
That's harsh, but true. So I guess we postpone for another year.
I'd, I'd say look into it further, see what we can do.
Oh, Collison. What, what more can we do?
We're talking, what, eighty feet of sidewalk? How, how, how long, how deep is this?
I'd have to get schematics, maybe Mr. Cook knows.
Eighty to a hundred and thirty feet, probably, max?
No, it's mostly like two blocks, so.
He owns two blocks?
It's a full block and then a half a block, kind of a four and a half.
No, I mean, the only one person that doesn't want a sidewalk there.
Well, it, it's just two parcels that have, that don't have the right-of-way room, and so each of them, yeah, is probably in that eighty-foot length range.
There's, we're talking on Cedar, Councilman Collison, right on Cedar and Whiskey, the guy north of Cedar and the guy south of Cedar. The guy south of Cedar is gonna follow suit with whatever that guy north of Cedar does, and he actually speaks on their behalf, even. I don't want no part of it, neither does my neighbor. And there's nothing you can do about it. I've already talked to my attorney.
Well, is there?
Quote-unquote.
I guess that's a question for our attorney.
There, there is something we can do about it, but we don't wanna be that guy.
Councilmember Collison.
The guy that provides safety for the kids walking to school?
Well, we can take it.
We don't wanna be that guy, but we bother residents with no parking signs in front of their house? For a problem that's the school's problem? I think there's something we can do, and I think we should look into it without just saying no. We're making all these other changes to accommodate the school parking lot. This is for kids that walk to school.
It's a previous right-of-way, am I saying that right? Jason?
Uh, I guess, I mean, he's right, the next step would be to just talk to the city attorney about his opinion on what the process would need to be.
We have not reached out to the city attorney on this item yet.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of that, see what, at least see what they have to say, so we can.
Like I say, we're, we're spending money and solving the school's parking lot issues.
I'm not really saying it forward, but it'd be nice to hear what the city attorney has to say.
Children's safety there. This is, this is a lot bigger issue. These kids actually walk a distance to school.
Yeah.
But I've also seen those same kids could walk on the one side of the street, walk down the middle of the road.
I've seen that, too.
Uh, I.
I have, cause I live there.
I believe you. I live right there, Dogwood and Whiskey.
My daycare's down the block from you. I travel Whiskey all the time.
My kids, my kids have to walk to school, and I know that they have to cross Whiskey Road twice to get to school, when it should only be once down where the, where the controlled intersection is, so. Um, and I know that my kids aren't the only kids that have to.
I'm pretty sure it's something called a previous right-of-way.
I guess, I guess it, reach out to the attorney, see what he says, go from there.
Will do.
Yeah, we haven't made a decision yet.
Okay.
Let's see what he has to say.
Okay, moving on. D seven, the legacy medal nomination, BMX, Councilman Collison.
And I.
Sorry, Dan, I had to do that.
No, I, this is, uh, just, uh, wanted to. No, I, this is, uh, just, uh, wanted to, um, since we changed it a little bit, it made it a little more easier for us to nominate some people that we feel that have put the city of Isani on the map. And I think the BMX Association has definitely done that, remember BMX? There, there's roughly two hundred and ninety USA BMX sanctioned tracks in the country. There's actually one in Alaska and one in Hawaii. Out of all those, uh, tracks, um, our track here in Isani is, was in, rated the number one track for twenty nineteen. I believe that was their fourth or fifth time being rated the number one track out of, like, say, California has thirty-one tracks. Thirty-one tracks, we have eleven, which is, is pretty big for, for our state. You got, like, Iowa has two tracks, North Dakota has two tracks, Montana has one track, I believe. So it's, for, for our little town to have that number one track, I think it's, it's, it's a pretty big deal. It's a huge sport, I mean, it, um, there isn't too many, uh, sports out there that have that amount of tracks. I don't know, across the country, two hundred and ninety-some tracks.
I would agree, I would say, whatever we needed to do to go forward with this, I would, I would be in favor of it.
So Mayor and Council, the process will be, if the consensus is that you all think that, um, they are deserving of this, for any of the nominations that come through, you'll give direction to staff. Ms. Garvey will contact the organization, find out when they're available to come to council, order the number of medals that they need to, um, for the amount of people that they would be coming or have.
They're only limited to two.
Two, two people, two medals?
Yeah, two medals, that's it.
I think the last time they were recognized, it was something in the realm of like fifteen medals or so people came.
Okay, no more than twenty.
As far as the amount of medals, I'm not sure how you would figure that, cause they have, they have a ton of volunteers. More than fifteen.
What about the board? How many's on the board?
On the board? I think there's like eight, eight of us.
No more than ten medals.
I can't, I can't be sure, they're.
And I can't remember exactly, it's been a number of years since we've ordered them on, I mean, I don't think I've ordered medals for this since twenty fourteen, but back then, it was like three bucks a piece, so they're not like super expensive.
Would it be better for this type of organization to have a plaque versus a medal? A legacy plaque versus a medal? That way they can.
I like it.
Hang it on the wall there at the track, where everybody can share in it.
I like it.
Cause like I said, they have a ton of people.
Can we make a plaque with a medal on it? Like just the medal on the plaque?
Well, we do, we can do some creative things, I'll take a look at it, but I mean, definitely, we can have a plaque.
Either way.
Yeah, I think that would be a better fit, if we could, and less expensive.
Yeah.
Because like I said, there's so many people that put their blood, sweat, and tears into that track, that it's, it's really hard to narrow it down to a, a, a number, you know? That's just my thought.
I would agree, I think a plaque would be great. That's why I'm saying, get creative with it, if we could, I mean, now, what's the ribbon? We don't want the ribbon on there, but the medal on a plaque, let them hang it in the facility. I'm just throwing, you know, I mean, I wanted to do the float with the mini chamber on it too, so, you know. But I'm for this, uh, good pick, Councilman Collison.
Thank you.
And these gentlemen are for it as well. I asked them individually, so let's go forward with it.
Just move forward.
Move on to D eight, the Vehicle Signage, Ms. Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, recently, there have been several questions about vehicle signage. Unfortunately, that is not something that the code currently regulates. Um, we do allow off-premise sign, which does allow, um, people to advertise for products that are not in our town. Uh, we also, um, the, the sign ordinance does not define, uh, or does define a sign as something that is directly or indirectly put on a building, structure, or land, so therefore, it's not.
So that six-foot by six-foot TV screen vehicle that sits in front of that CBD, CBD place, we can't do anything about it?
Permitted by code, and also content is protected by, um, First Amendment. Yeah, so the only way that you could possibly look at that is if we, um, don't allow off-premise.
Chief, that's a driving distraction, wouldn't you say?
Not when it's parked, when it's driving, I could say, yes.
They got digital billboards that are twenty times that size, right next to the freeway now, so.
It's no different than any other visual distraction on the side of the road. Driving, different issue, if it was driving down the road.
You might as well just.
I've definitely seen that thing drive down, it's driven by my office.
Right, I mean, w- well, even if it was sitting there, you're still driving down the road, and you're like, you might as well just look at your cellphone then, while you're driving. Are you looking at that thing?
There's billboards that are bigger than that, so, hard to stretch.
Yeah.
Good effort, though.
I see the problem with this is, if somebody, if somebody works out of to, somebody works out of town, and they bring their company vehicle home, what do we, then, then, that would be the problem. Okay, well, they're bringing their signage into our town, you know, if they work at.
You, you think they're gonna work for that sign building and drive it to their house while it's still going? I mean, I think they're gonna turn it off and then drive it.
No, but you're like referring to vehicles that are wrapped.
Yeah, wrapped, or, or just.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying, any vehicle that has.
Advertisement on.
Advertisement, I mean, wrapped, wrapped including, but, you know, I, I just, I would think it would be hard to enforce, but, I mean, I'm for, I'm for this type of thing, you know? I don't want my kids walking around seeing Sex World advertised, but, you know, what do you, yeah.
I mean, my six-year-old, you drive by, and dad, what's Sex World, but hey, no big deal. It's all right.
Again, can't regulate content, that's clearly protected by the First Amendment, so that's something we'll never be able to do, at least by what the amendments say at this point. Regulating flashing signs, um, location, advertising off-premise, those are things that we can regulate. If you don't wanna allow it on vehicles, just like Councilman Burgley said, well, then you get into.
And this would be a fine line, especially when the city wants to put a digital sign on heritage that.
But the only reason why they're parking that there is because they don't wanna pull a sign permit and do it the right way.
Well, they actually do have a sign permit in for review.
Oh, they do?
To do a dynamic sign. Yeah, so I don't know if that was just a temporary thing in this case, or, or what, but also, again, if we do get into the right-ruining vehicles, you know, ABC Plumbing, then they wouldn't be able to be here. Um, then you look at UPS, UPS trucks, well, they have advertising on them, can they park on their lots? Other businesses that have trailers in their lots, you know, would that, that would be regulated then.
A truck that's in Jimmy's Pizza that says Jimmy's Pizza.
That would be regulated.
Well, that's a concession trailer, it's not necessarily for advertising, but I, I, I agree with you guys that I don't like the sign, that the particular sign that we're talking about, I, I don't like it at all, but I have no interest in looking at regulating it either, I think, you know.
That'd be pretty.
It'd be pretty tough.
It'd be pretty tough.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we all agree, we don't like it, but.
I would wanna do it anyway, but.
I think we could all agree we don't like it, but.
I don't think there's much, I don't think there's anything for us to do with it, so let's, let's.
Let's just quit beating a dead horse and move on.
Let's quick kick, let's not kick the lying dog at the moment.
I concur. Well. I say we move on to D nine, uh, Strikes and. Strikes and Minnesota Equipment, uh, clarification, Ms. Selman.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this has been brought up a few times, specifically for, um, Strikes Funeral Home and Minnesota Equipment, uh, because they did, there's only change to the Highway sixty-five overly district. Uh, right now, the Highway sixty-five overly district does not allow these two uses. Therefore, they become illegal non-conforming use, which means they can, um, go ahead with their business the way it is today, they can do maintenance, upkeep, they need to resurface their parking lot, they can do that, they need a new roof, they can do that, they just cannot expand at all. Because it's illegal non-conforming use. If they wanted to sell their business to a like business, they could do that, as long as they didn't continue the use with, for a year. So let's say Strikes wanted to sell to Johnson Funeral Home, they certainly could do that, they can change their name, same type of business. But if Strikes went out, they vacated their business for a year, and then a new funeral home wanted to come in, they couldn't do that. So I hope that clarifies some of the questions.
It does, it's just kinda BS that they can't expand if they wanted to.
They don't even, they don't have enough room anyway.
Yeah, Minnesota Equipment needs more room. And I don't know what Strikes wants, they wanted parking lot, but now they've, uh, thanks to our gracious, uh, new lovely hotel, they've talked to that lovely manager over there, and, and, uh, they use each other's lots for overflow, so.
Who's sitting in our audience?
Who's sitting in our audience? So thanks to you, that helped out Strikes, but still, we're, poor Minnesota Equipment. But thank you, Ms. Selman.
Is there nothing we can do about that, to solve that problem, or?
Well, it's just, I mean, for both places comes down to the size of their lot to start with. Even if we allowed them to, they physically.
Where are they gonna expand to?
Don't have room to do it, anyway.
There's nowhere for Minnesota Equipment to stretch their arms.
Unless they just did not store anything outside anymore.
It's not, it's not this that's holding them back.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, it's part of it, but not all.
It is, it is part of it. If you wanted to change it so they could expand, let's say they bought the lot next to them, um, you would have to do an ordinance amendment to allow those as permitted uses or conditional uses, because right now, they're not permitted at all.
So I guess we could.
I mean, it doesn't, I just, if they've been there for that long, I mean, well before this was, wasn't put in place, then.
You, you missed the very, very heated discussions on this whole thing. Mayor Johnson wasn't here, part of that. Dan and Paul and I were, and two other entities were in here, and it got heated, and I, it's another one of those things, it is what it is at this moment, there's nothing you can do to change it. That was made into the business overlay district, and it kinda.
Pretty good, you could give them a temporary use.
Strikes Funeral Home, shut right back where those gentlemen are.
And let them expand.
No, Mr. Mayor, you could do an ordinance amendment.
Ordinance amendment.
To allow it by, you know, conditional use permit, or as a permitted use.
So you could let them expand, you just have to.
You just have to amend the ordinance.
Amend the ordinance.
And we wouldn't have to change it for everybody, because it could be a conditional use part of it, so we would have the choice of just these two are the only ones that we're gonna allow, unless some future council decided to, to let somebody else do it.
You could do that, but then you'd have to have valid reasons to deny a conditional use permit for someone else that came in, and if they meet all of the requirements, it's pretty hard to deny.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Move on to the twenty twenty budget discussion, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna speak on behalf of Mr. Becker on this item. So in the detailed budget that he presented to council, and that was approved in December of twenty nineteen for the twenty twenty budget, um, in that was money for fun, funding the special projects coordinator position, um, and slash assistant city administrator, that'd be at Mr. Laura Sung's position. When Mr. Becker was working in two workbooks, um, he had our previous old budget workbooks, and he was working in the new ones as he was creating, cause it would be better, which I do a hundred percent agree. But a year and a half ago, when he was doing a summation of the column, he missed one of the blocks, which happened to be that special coordinator's position, or special project coordinator position, which resulted in eighty-two thousand approximately not getting included into the full budget, um, that you saw in December. So it doesn't mean entirely a whole lot, um, but it does mean that there's a shortfall within our twenty twenty budget of approximately eighty-two thousand. Mr. Becker spoke to the auditors and asked them about that, he has now corrected that summation error that was, that, so it won't happen again. Um, but the auditor said, you don't have to do anything, you can fix it at the end of the year, make a budget adjustment, which we do every year typically, because a lot of things were usually under. Um, so we can wait to the end of the year, or the alternative is, we could use money, funds that we've received, um, in our special revenue fund. Uh, I'm sorry, Special Assessment Revenue Fund, which is Fund nine twenty, and we can make the transfer of the eighty-two thousand now from that fund into the general fund to be made whole now. So staff is looking for a direction on what you would like us to do for that.
So, first of all, Mr. Becker's not a robot after all, fellas, he does make mistakes. Secondly, do we wanna fix this now, or do we just wanna wait until the end of the year?
Question I have is, at the end of the year, like you said, there's many things that are over, you know, we're, you know, budgeted for more than what we actually needed. That money would go back into the general fund to cover that, or back to the special fund?
Correct.
I'd say, let's do it now, be done with it, keep our books straight, and then as long as that money gets reimbursed back into that, that's fine with me.
Well, the money that comes into that ju, well, and let me clarify, the money that comes into that Special Assessment Revenue Fund is by special revenue from like the deferred assessments, like the Habee property, um, which is actually the bulk of what that, there's about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars sitting in there now, and that's where that money came from. So that just gets money dumped into it, it has no, no source, it doesn't offset the levy per se, it just kinda sits in that fund, cause you never know when you're gonna get it. Um, he just pays on it every so often, so I guess we wouldn't necessarily put the money back into that fund. Um, it would be if that refills itself, cause it has no special place to go, just as my, it comes in, that we would just enter into the general fund anyways.
So it's kind of money not lost, but not.
Gained.
Gained either.
Money that we weren't counting on.
There we go, there we go.
We don't balance the budget on any of those funds, cause you never know when they're gonna come.
Did Mike have a preference on how he, what would be easier to, how to handle it, or?
Him and I both agreed that it makes sense just to budget it now, or, you know, balance the books now, so to say, and then you don't have to worry about it, but we both are very comfortable, if we want to wait, we know that, um, it will wash out and we'll make it whole then, but sometimes it's just easier, you find something.
I think we just nip it in the butt right now. Just get it out of the way.
I agree, get it over with, just there, do it, be done with it.
Sounds good.
I mean, I'm more amazed with that he's actually human. An agreeance, take everyone out?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
There's your answer. Uh, D eleven, the State Aid, uh, Revision by Mr. Cook.
So, um, with the, uh, the new developments that we've had that have added street length to the city, and, uh, and the recent annexations of, uh, of, uh, Fourth Avenue and Tyler Street, the total length of road within the city, um, has a portion that can be assigned to be a state aid route. And we need to assign that to an actual segment of road to get state aid funds to be getting allotted to the city. And so, uh, just this past year, we were able to add just under two-tenths of a mile to the system. And so after evaluating the current layout versus where we need improvements, um, that figure you see before you is, uh, recommended changes to the system. Um, where we'd move two segments, Town's Edge Road and, uh, and some of South Brookview Lane, uh, and then add in this additional length that we get. And, uh, if you, if you look on there, we'd essentially just complete Main Street, the entire segment as a state aid route, and then Birch and Dogwood are both, uh, in pretty bad shape, where we're looking at needing to do repairs on them, so we'd be able to use the funds, uh, just kind of as planned, but, uh, in a more maximized way than on roads that don't need as much improvement. And so, the process here is, I have checked with state aid that they approve these types of modifications, they said this is fine. Uh, the council then has to pass a resolution to remove, um, those segments that had it, and then.
What, what would you like to see us do, Jason?
It would, it would be the two resolutions that are just required, one is to remove it from the segments that were currently assigned, and then another resolution that would assign it to these three segments. And, uh, once that's done, then it officially goes into the system, and we actually would start getting more money from state aid annually, uh, just for having made the modification.
Well, now we'd be downright silly not to say, let's do that then, wouldn't we?
How often can we change it?
Um, once you use a segment, like, once you use funds on a segment, like we just did Paul and Neil, uh, two years ago, and so once that happened, I believe you have to, it's locked on that route for at least the life of the project, I believe. So I think it's like twenty-five years, it's stuck now on that one, but these routes that I'm recommending move, we haven't used funds on, and they don't warrant a, as costly of an improvement as these other segments. And so, uh, once they're assigned, they're more or less stuck, because after that life expectancy has occurred, well, now it's time to do more work, so you'd use the state aid funds again. And so, really, it'll just be as we grow, you know, we'll continue to get, it's twenty percent of how much street length you add can get added. So until we have enough more road segments added to be able to add another block, um, you know, essentially as that occurs is when we'd kinda look at modifying if we can.
So basically, what it does is it gives us, those roads that he wants to put on there, we can get state aid funding, which costs, saves us money from spending the full dollar.
My next question was, I mean, these must be coming up on our schedule of streets that need to be done then, somewhat soon then, huh?
Right, yeah, the capital improvement plan has identified these green sections in the next five years, and, uh, and then, so it's just using the funds that are coming in, and they're the ones that are in the worst shape that need it, and it, you know, they just kinda generally look to go hand in hand and.
I would, I would say to go forward with what he's got planned here.
I would second that one. I mean, I, I concur.
I mean, I don't know what your thought is, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Burgley, Mr. Collison. First down.
Okay, sounds good.
We did add a twelve to this, which we didn't write on your guys, but it's written on mine. Coburn's is requesting a brat stand. And Ms. Wood, Ms. Selman, you can cover this one, 'cause you have all the input.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, so Coburn's is located in our Highway sixty-five overlay district. And in that district, we allow administrative permits for outdoor sales, temporary general retail salvage and civic organizations. So they could be, they could have that there under the administrative permit. However, in our temporary sales, temporary outdoor sales section, it does state that temporary outdoor sales are permitted four times per calendar year, and should not exceed ten days for each event, no more than the number permitted identified shall be used to the same business in the given calendar year. So if we follow this ordinance the way it's written today, we could have them do an administrative permit, but they would only be able to sell those, have that brat stand four times per year. I don't know what the request was, if it was for more or less than that.
Don't they, I mean, couldn't that fall under the new food truck?
We checked that and it wouldn't. I, that's funny, I said the same thing this morning.
More of a.
They want like a tent.
They want like, oh, a tent.
Well, it'd be like a tent with, they supply the tent, they have a grill, they, they supply everything.
Yeah, it doesn't make the definition.
I said the same thing this morning.
So if they parked a trailer next to the tent?
Yeah, right.
So Mayor and Council, I don't know if they specifically said tent, I know that the Coburn's in Princeton does a trailer.
They have a trailer, yeah.
They do a trailer that they, I don't know if they own the trailer, how they get the trailer, but they actually do it out of a trailer, like with a little window.
You're right. So yeah, why wouldn't it fall under a food truck?
I think it's to fall under the food truck.
I didn't see their request, so I can't speak to that.
I would get more, well, first and foremost, is the council willing to let them do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they did it last year with the ribs, they were outside to refry them.
Well, they weren't supposed to. She's surprised your mayor didn't know about that.
That, I believe, Mayor and Council, I think that that was actually just Coburn's trying to promote something of a food that they have, it wasn't a nonprofit group running that.
Or, or the brats was a nonprofit.
Uh-huh.
That might have been different, but.
Chief, where are you going?
They're, they're exchanging, it's a table.
Oh, I see how it is.
It's like a wrestling match.
Tag and tag.
No, I have no problem with them doing that, I think that's just helping them promote their business, but I think we should look into more.
Is it gonna lie in the admin or the food truck? We should check that out, and what more, what do they, what do they want?
Yeah, they wanna run it all summer long.
Yeah.
I mean, you go over to, you go over to County Market in North Branch, they have one there all summer long. You go to Home Depots, they have donut trucks and taco trucks and hot dog trucks in all these places.
My guess is they're gonna do it like a Thursday or Friday, every, every week.
They would do it in the summer, I bet.
Yeah.
So, I, you know what?
That would be my guess, 'cause that's what they did with the ribs last year, so.
So I guess, I would say the council's willing to let you do this, but they're looking for more info, and you know what to ask, and then come back and.
The day they did the ribs, it was, basically they're promoting what they have in their meat department.
Yep.
But they were going to the point of cooking them for you.
Well, maybe they're promoting their brats.
Well, the, the brat and hot dog sale is, they partner with nonprofits and, like the baseball team. They, you know, the baseball team serves the brats, and they get to keep half the proceeds. So it's not, it is promoting Coburn's per se, but it's not promoting like their meat department or something, it's not the same as the ribs now.
But yeah, check into it, see if it's more of a, you know, what they're, how long they wanna do it, and then I, if it fits it in the food truck, they'll look, 'cause that's what the whole discussion has been about, so. I see no reason that they couldn't, so.
I concur. Anything else, Ms. Wood? Hello, Ms. Wood?
Yeah, I was just reading their email.
Give her a break.
She looked like she was in her own world for a second over there.
I'd like to apologize to the head of the council for the retreat.
Specifically, if there was a tent or a trailer, they don't state it in the request, so we'll, we'll follow up with them and let them know.
Sometimes they do put up a tent, though, to put a picnic table underneath it.
Yeah, or a tra, or a trailer, I've seen that too. But I, I would say, you know, hey, the council's willing to let this happen, but we're looking for a little more details and see if it follows under the admin permit or the food truck.
It sounds like they're maybe looking for two days a month.
Two weeks a month?
Two days per month.
Oh, two days per month?
I believe so, through the summer months, so that might be more than four.
Well, our summers are very short.
It's only six days.
Is there the ability, she let to do a request, because admin, you said only allow us for four days? Can they, is there a way that they can go to council to ask for that to be extended? So even if it doesn't work for food trucks, they could get the admin permit, but then they're gonna need to go to council and ask that to be extended X amount of days and.
Find out more.
Yeah, find out more.
I would ask them to bring a sample in of the brats. And tell them the council wants food.
It'd be nice if they did it more than two days a month, you can add that.
The council and guests need to test their food before it goes out?
Make sure it's up to.
Make sure you guys are here then too, okay?
Standard.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, therefore we stand adjourned.